The council has returned from executive session at 5:40. Moving in our agenda to new business continued, consideration possible action regarding the appointee of the board and commission. The selection by our council was Julie Ward. For the business on this particular item of...
Mayor, I think we got a...
Yeah, we need to make a motion.
Make a motion and second, and then...
Okay, we do have motion, yep, and a second.
I'll move that we appoint Julie Ward to the open position on planning zone.
Second.
Good. And for the discussion, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owen?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
I also vote aye.
Moving in our agenda to item four adjournment at 6:50. Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting, City Council of City of Pearland, for Monday, 13th, 2019. Moving in our agenda, new business, item one, consideration possible action resolution 2019-130, Clay Person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is required action by the council. The city had called for a bond election, and the results of that are reported in this resolution, and need council action to ratify and recognize the results of that election that was held.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item two, Clay Person.
I believe that we do need a roll call vote on that, sir.
Okay.
Do you want to ratify the individual? Bond election?
Yeah, I was going to dump them together, but why don't we ratify each separate? Okay. We have motion to ratify the bond issue?
I'll move that we...
I was going to say, it's just a resolution number, so you will not need to read out the individual.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I apologize. No, because it's a resolution number, you're only required to read out the resolution number on that, you will not be required to read out the actual result.
Thank you. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2019-130, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Moving to agenda item number two, consideration possible action resolution R2019-129.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And likewise, the city conducted a general election for council member seats, and this particular resolution recounts and documents the results of that election that was held on May 4th. So again, the resolution suggests council consider and act on this with a vote.
I'll move consideration possible action resolution number R2019-129, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, Councilmember Perez, do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Moving in item number three on our agenda, Councilmember Perez.
Mayor, move we issue the certificate for the election for Councilmember J. David Little to position number five?
Second.
We do have a five, is that one?
Mayor, the certificate?
I can say, you know, this was a tough race, but it's a beautiful election certificate, which I shall show you, and we'll take a picture of this in a few minutes. And it's with my pleasure that I read this to you, certificate of election in name and by the authority of the City of Pearland, Texas. This is to certify that at a general election held on 4th day of May 80, 2019, J. David Little was duly elected, Councilmember, position number five. In testimony hereof, I have hereunto two, sign my name and cause the seal of the City of Pearland to be affixed this 13th day of May 80, 2019, and that affix it as Tom Reed Item business item one, item four, administration of the oath of office by Judge Greg Hill to J. David Little, and need a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Wind it down.
There's no need for a motion and a second on this particular item.
Motion and we have a second.
Yeah, just read it into the agenda, and then, of course, the oath can be given at that point.
This is a separate motion, and we need a head count, which is Perez and Hernandez.
Mayor, Judge Hill can now swear.
Okay, you've got him.
Councilmember Little in now.
Go to work.
All right, if you would, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, J. David Little.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid?
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay?
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute?
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value?
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment for giving?
Promised any public office or employment for giving.
Or withholding of a vote?
Or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected?
At the election at which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation?
Reward to secure my confirmation or appointment.
Whichever the case may be?
Whatever the case may be.
So help me God.
Judge Hill, I still...
Okay, first time to do this, so here we go. Raise your right hand. I state your name?
I, J. David Little.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of?
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
The Office of Councilmember, position number five?
The Office of Councilmember, position number five.
For the City of Pearland, State of Texas?
For the City of Pearland, State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now, all right. Good job.
Moving in our agenda to item number six.
Mayor's issuing says certificate of election to Trent A. Perez, Councilmember, position number six.
You know, we only do this once a year, and it takes a little remembrance on some of us, some people like the judge, has been through this before, and so we are very delighted to have you here, Judge, I trust you. Certificate of election, name and by the authority of the City of Pearland, Texas. This is to certify that at a general election held on the 4th day of May, 2019, Trent A. Perez was duly elected, Councilmember, position six. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto, signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Pearland to be affixed, and this is on this, the 13th day of May, 80, 2019, and sitting next to you up there, in your position of Mayor Pro Tem, I signed it as Tom Reed Mayor. And with great pleasure, I present this to you.
Next we'll move to the administration of oath of office by Judge Greg Hill to Trent Perez, that's item number six on our agenda under new business.
Raise your right hand. I state your name?
I, Trent Perez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of?
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
The Office of Councilmember, position number six?
The Office of Councilmember, position number six.
For the City of Pearland, of the State of Texas?
For the City of Pearland, of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Moving in our agenda, item number seven, Clay Person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another resolution requiring a council vote, and this is setting the runoff election for the remaining city council position, and so this sets the wheels in motion for that. There is early voting, but the final vote is on June 8th, as noted here.
I make a resolution for the consideration possible action resolution number R2019-131. Second.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
You know, when we have the opportunity to recognize organizations, individuals, and special events, we do have a special event for some very special people. I'd like to ask Chief Perez to continue setting him a seat while I'm gone, make sure it don't make it, and ask the chief to come down with appropriate individuals that you feel should be here for the proclamation. You know, we have, look at the good guys, they're taking me in as soon as I finish. Be gentle. You know, the police department is the one that makes us feel comfortable and safe at home, and it's one that is always there when you call, and it's appropriate that we recognize them with a proclamation, which I should like to do. Office of the Mayor of the City of Pearland, whereas the police department and dedicated law enforcement officers are our peacemakers, provide our cities, and the social services of protecting the rights and freedoms of the citizens, and contributing to the security of our communities. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and the challenges that the police officers do encounter as they serve the citizens by safeguarding life, property, on a daily basis. And whereas our dedicated police officers are greatly appreciated for their service to our communities by preserving the rights and securities of our citizens with protection from violence or disorder, and we pay special tribute to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas in 1962, President John Kennedy signed the first proclamation designated May 13th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that falls as the National Police Week. This year, we celebrate the 12th through May 18th, 2019, as National Police Week, to recognize those who work to make our communities safe for our citizens and for our businesses. Now therefore, I, Tom Reed, by the power vested in me, as the Mayor of the City of Pearland, Texas, hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in Pearland and surrounding areas, and I ask all citizens to join with me in recognizing and commemorating the peace officers past and present, who have rendered dedicated service to their communities by protecting our citizens, thereby contributing to our system's security and to our quality of life. It's a great deal of pleasure that I presented this under my hand and seal of office this 13th day of May, 2019, and signed it, Tom Reed, your mayor. And I tell you, I'm standing here with some great guys, and it's only part of the enforcement that we have from our police officers, and they're the ones that are making us feel very comfortable tonight, because we are here knowing that we are protected, and I think that's wonderful. And chief, I'd like to give this to you, then turn it around, I think this way, and point it up there, we get a little trauma piece to take home with you tonight.
Really appreciate this proclamation and recognizing the officers, not just here in Pearland, but all over the country. Unfortunately, we did lose three officers in the history of the Pearland Police Department, Officer Henry Wendell in 1967, Officer James Cassidy in 1973, and then Officer India Panya in 2016. So this week is dedicated to those officers for Pearland and all the officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty in our country. So thank you very much for recognizing us, recognizing.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you, sir.
With that matter concluded, I'll move to item three on the agenda for adjournment. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes.
Make it sound like I'm opening a meeting. I also do. Today, we are, a special day for our candidates, and for all of us, of course, but if you'll please stand, we'll have an invocation today by Councilmember Carbone, and a pledge of allegiance to Councilmember Hernandez.
Y'all would bow your heads with me. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for another beautiful day. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us, help us to pause and realize that it's all because of you and for you. Be with everybody that's out there, both in the city, in our nation, overseas, protecting our freedoms each and every day. Be with us today, tonight, help us to make wise and pleasing decisions that honor you, and get everybody home safely tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one
Thank all of you for being here, and if you're standing and wish to sit, well, there's a couple of vacant chairs down here that you're sure welcome to use, and as we go through the process of our council meeting tonight, I'm following the order of the agenda that I have, you may have had someone on the table out there, I'm not sure, but I am following that particular sense of order. Item three on this agenda is the roll call, and all of our council members are here, with smiling faces, and following that is item four, which is an opportunity for citizens to speak before the council, called citizen comments. So I ask councilmember, do Councilmember Perez present those for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor, new and old. All right, I have three worksheets from citizens that'd like to speak. One is on a particular item, we will call that citizen up on that item. The other three want to talk about matters, general matters that are not associated with items on the agenda, so we'll call them up in the order which I receive them. First, Mr. Scott Foulis, you please come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the purpose of record. Please keep your comments to three minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. My name is Scott Foulis, my address is 3203 Forrester Drive, Pearland, Texas. Hi, everyone. I've approached a couple of you individually on this topic already, and I'd like to put it before the entire council today. Pearland voters were asked to go to the polls five times in 2018. We just went to the polls again a little over a week ago, and will be going again next month. I'd like to propose that we move Pearland's local elections from May to November. This will accomplish three things. First, it will increase the convenience, but increase convenience by reducing the number of trips to the polls that our citizens need to make, since federal, state, and county elections are also in November. Second, it will save tax money by cutting election costs. Third, it will increase voter participation by putting more candidates on the ballots that citizens will actually see. In the even-numbered years, there's always a general election in November. If we add a few city or school district races to that, we'll have eliminated an entire trip to the polls in May, and maybe an extra runoff election as well, since the local runoffs would also be held together with the other fall election runoffs. This has already worked well for our neighbors in Missouri City. They moved their local elections from May to November in 2016, and increased voter turnout for their local elections from around 5,000 to about 25,000, a five-fold improvement. Including both the city and the school district, there are usually only between four and seven local races. Depending on the district, voters in Pearland probably had almost 30 races on November's ballot. Adding a few more won't seem like a burden to anyone. Straight ticket voting has now been eliminated by the Texas Legislature, so that's no longer a barrier, as voters will have to look at every race on the ballot in November anyway. Finally, I've been speaking to Pearland citizens about this idea regularly over the last few months, and I still haven't found a single person that doesn't think it's a good idea, including both Republicans and Democrats. This is something that could be done in a true spirit of bipartisanship for all the citizens in the city. In research on the idea, I discovered that section 41.0052 of the Texas Election Code prohibits changes to election dates by home rule cities after the end of 2016. I don't understand why that is, but the date has been extended several times in the past with fairly simple amendments. Still, legislation is required. Dallas is putting through such legislation on their own city right now. I've spoken to Senator Taylor's office, and he has agreed to move legislation for Pearland if the city requests it, either with a letter from the mayor expressing our desire to move the election, or with a resolution by city council to move the election. Time is now short, however, as deadlines for submitting bills in the current legislative session are approaching in the next several days. I urge the city council and the mayor to take immediate action and vote on such resolution as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Mr., I'm sorry if I pronounce this incorrectly, Robert Philbrook. Thank you, sir. My poor eyesight, I can't read your handwriting very well. If you'll please state your name and address for the purpose of the record, please keep your comments to three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
I'm Robert Philbrook, 4019 Crystal Lake Circle South. Couple of comments, been following in the news, the city news, regarding the water meter replacement, and nowhere have I ever, have I seen anything that mentioned the cost benefits of doing it. And one of the issues that concerns me is that the program talks about reducing the number of meter reading staff, and then using them on other water service projects. My thought would be, if you're eliminating these positions, eliminate them totally, and the individuals who are affected would be available for hiring in open positions within the City of Pearland. That would give you a true cost savings for part of the, part of the operation, anyway. I'm not too much of a fan, because the impression I have is that the water meters are supposed to be the best thing since sliced bread, and I'm afraid, like any other electronic device, whether it be water meters or your own cellphone, they fail. My other comment wants to deal with this bus service, the Kerrville Bus Service that's coming out of the Shadow Creek area, and I've been watching that, and it, most of the, most concerns have been, and justifications for many of the roads have been to get people to the TMC faster. And here we've got this bus service that you're coming up with, that's talking about taking 10 stops at the Texas Medical Center, and nine stops somewhere downtown, wherever downtown is, and be able to do this to get people in there, in there, doesn't have a schedule, say, how many times a day and what. And one of the issues that's going to take place, it makes me wonder, if the people who came up with this idea have visited Fannin or the Smithlands, and seen the hundreds of cars that are parked there, where people then park their car, catch the train to the TMC or downtown, because it's too expensive to park their car all day at the TMC. So I think this is going to be dead on arrival, and I think the city council needs to look at that, so we don't waste more money on something like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Ben Smith. Mr. Smith, if you could please state your name and address for the purpose of the record, please keep your comments to three minutes, I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you, sir. My name is Ben Smith, 9330...
My name is Ben Smith, 9330 Broadway Street, Suite 422 is Pearland Bicycles, and that represents a number of citizens of Pearland. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I want to thank you for this time tonight. May is National Bike Month, and we wanted to take a minute and ride our bikes down here to thank you for the work that you've done to make Pearland a safer place, a safer city for cyclists. You know, we appreciate your, you know, continued presence in, in our lives as we try and go out on the road safely. And we, we would like to stand with you and encourage you to continue with new signage and with continued creation of bike lanes throughout the city, so that this city can be safe for, for all of its residents. The beautiful thing about cycling is that it, it, you know, incorporates people of all ages, races, genders, and it, I feel that it is a wonderful representation of the city of Pearland, and that the people that we have here tonight represent Pearland wonderfully as well, just as you, you represent us as, as citizens of this city. So again, we thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the future as we continue to make the city safer for all cyclists.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, that's all I have for general items. Again, one more speaker that wants to speak on new business, item number four, and I'll call him up on that item.
Okay, very good. Moving in our agenda to item five, which is public hearings tonight. There are none. We do not have a public hearing. Moving to item six, consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, which is items A, B, A through, I'm trying to turn the page, J?
Mayor, I'd like to pull D.
B?
D is in dog.
D is in dog.
And J.
J.
J? DJ, okay. Those exceptions removed. Commissioner Carbonne, would you present this for consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Approval of consent agenda items A through I, with the exception of D, so moved.
Second.
There was A through I?
With the exception of D.
And then J for you, wasn't it? A through I and J. A?
A through I with the exception of J. I mean, with the exception of D.
What do we have here? Okay. Have a motion second?
Sir.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Carbonne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Consent agenda items A through, A through I, except, except consent agenda B and J.
Moving to the next item, which you had.
I'm sorry, consent agenda D and J.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2019-117, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item D is a renewal of a contract that was reviewed by the council previously. This is for the next time period, May through May next year. It is, was done through a purchasing partnership cooperative and recommend renewing, as I said, with Goodyear Tire, operating as Adam Auto Center, estimated amount of $100,000 for the city's needs. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. We're not actually going out and spending $100,000 on tires on an as-needed basis, is that correct?
Correct. It gives us a list from by, as throughout the year, we acquire them, yes, sir.
Is this a $100,000 amount? Is this something based on historical use?
Right. That's why we've done these generally, yes.
And looking at the chart of prices for these, these tires, has anyone ever called, like, locally Discount Tire to see if these are really good prices that we're getting, or?
We really don't have that option. I mean, we get the pricing when we get that. It is bid out through this cooperative, and so we've got the, the set list, and so we're able to buy off of that, so. We don't do, go out each time we need a different set to go out and price it out, you know.
I understand what I'm saying. Has anybody called and said, hey, Discount Tire, what does this tire cost? Or Joe Blow that walks in off the street to make sure that it is, you know, a good price we're getting for these things?
Let's kind of, I guess, I understand the question, but, you know, sort of the purpose of the bidding of it is that we have a bunch of different needs, and people are free to compete to give us their best pricing on that at that time. And, you know, that's the advantage, too, of locking it in. You know, got to presume that the price isn't going down over time, but that's the best pricing that people who chose to select, so.
Okay, thank you.
Also, a question to comment on that item?
Just one quick, again, on clarification on that. I mean, we got so many different pieces of equipment out there that have tires. Do we, on bidding those, is that for the selection of tires, you know, for a truck or one for a heavier, heavier truck, or 18-wheeler, whatever? Is that in there, and that's just the average price, or?
Right. I'll, I mean, I presume there's a list in there, which you're approving, that shows the exact series. I mean, you're, you're correct, we have a bunch of different sizes and needs, so, I don't know, Clarence, somebody want to point me to the right page where it shows that list that's included in the packet?
So that's just a, really, an amount, not to exceed that dollar amount, regardless of the size tire or whatever?
If you have the whole packet in front of you, Mr. Pearson, it should start on page 54?
So of that particular item, page 4 of 39, there's, that you see there, that's the list of all the different vehicles we have, and it goes on for pages and pages. As you said, we got a lot of different vehicle needs, sizes, and so we can buy off of this. Yep.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Does that complete your comments? We do have motion second on the floor, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbonne?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Item D passed, seven to zero.
And moving next to item B, J, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2019-116, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. Item J is another renewal of a contract the city had bid out, and this would give us pricing to lock in for the next 12-month period. The, we have gone through our budget allocation council, recall that we lowered the budget amount for the current FY '19. We are going to be coming to you with supplemental recommendations that would include replenishing that a bit for the remainder of fiscal year '19. And, and then we're getting into place and locking in while we have the opportunity these contract prices for next fiscal year '20. And we didn't want to just leave it uncapped, so estimated amount for this year for discussion purposes for $150,000 and $300,000 for next fiscal year. But you'll see separate budget actions to replenish those funds and to make an allocation for next FY '20. So the action tonight is simply to lock in these contract prices that were deemed good, and similarly, you're not going to see them presumably go down, and so we need to do that, or else these prices would go away, expire, so. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Counselor, have a question to comment on that item?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on this, and it shows on expenditure required, $150,000 for FY '19. So that was in the fiscal year. Have we expended $150,000 so far in, in the budget for this year, or?
Right. So this had, we've already spent $150,000, that's what we've gone through. You know, that was a reduced amount, so it didn't take long to get through that. And this action would allocate up to $150,000 for FY '19, but we'll be bringing that mid-year budget allocation to you for your consideration next month, as we've done every year.
Okay. The other thing I had in this as far as streets and sidewalks on repair and stuff of that, how much are we doing with our own staff since we bought this concrete truck and everything? Are we doing any of this with our own people there in Public Works?
Well, we did do a write-up on that. I don't know, Clarence, how we, how this relates to the contract amount, what we're doing there?
I'm actually going to let Andrea answer that, but I can say we are doing quite a bit with our own crews. In fact, in between our contract with the county right now, I think we are doing the bulk of the work along with our external contracts. Andrea?
There you are.
Good evening. Staff working on the concrete truck, with the concrete truck, I wanted to rephrase. They are working on utility cuts that are repairs due to water and sewer line breaks, and that work is very heavy at the moment. They are, when they are able to work in close proximity to a sidewalk issue, they do coordinate and make sure that that is done, so that the only thing that is charged to the general fund is the materials. And that staff is competent in making those repairs, both for driveways, sidewalks across driveways, and sidewalks.
Okay, so that's, that's out of the enterprise fund, and the stuff that you're doing now is coming out of the, well, out of the enterprise fund and not the other budget, but I guess on the, so we don't do any of the, I noticed on there, the, coming in saw cutting panels and what have you, and pulling those out and, and coming in and redoing those, rebarred stuff on that. We don't do any of that?
At this time, sir, what we have found is that with a contract such as this, it is grouped, the work is grouped together for a reduced, kind of, it's better efficiency, and staff has access to the concrete truck. What they have just started meeting about is preparing to do some of the work on their own, but with the number of people that we have on that crew, there's basically enough to do a small job, but not enough to do the type of work that we're able to accomplish with a contractor.
Okay, and, but we could do some, like, on the sidewalks, residential-type things, or where there's just small joints and what have you, though.
Yes, absolutely.
So this contract would be for larger-type projects, or what?
So in the last contract year, this particular contract was utilized to replace concrete panels in the Country Place subdivision. So that was about $100,000 worth of work. With the current funds that we have, the best use of it is either for selective panel replacement for streets or the sidewalk repairs. And we try to balance those, but this contractor is able to do both. And staff does not currently have a good, basically, a good plan to execute such the volume that we would be requiring on our selective panel replacement.
Okay, and most of these are just things that we find that, through our inspectors out there, that need to be replaced or damaged or what have you?
The work is focused right now on the backlog of sidewalk repairs. So this contractor is able to work very efficiently and has done quite a number of sidewalk repairs in the Southdown neighborhood in Southwick, and they're able to close quite a few work orders in addition to addressing some very old infrastructure and recapitalizing that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that complete the staff report? Okay. Madam Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Mayor, Councilmember Carbonne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Information complete. Let's move to item seven on our agenda. Matters removed from the consent agenda, and we had three of those, so we just completed that portion. Moving in our agenda also to item number eight, new business. Item number one, consideration, first reading of an ordinance 11071. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1107-1, so moved.
Motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is an ordinance, maintain the integrity of our utility system, make sure that cross connections from that are deemed safe and aren't allowing backflow and causing contamination in our system. Some of this is dictated by TCEQ and the regulations, so this is bringing us up to speed and making this all current with state-of-the-art requirements.
I think we've visited with that just recently, didn't we?
What's that?
An issue similar to that.
Yes.
Have, counsel have a question to comment?
I do, yeah.
Lido, MacDuff.
Fair enough. So, you know, I think these backflow preventers are important, they're an important component to us managing our water system, but they're also expensive, and it's difficult sometimes in the development community to know when that, that preventer is needed. And when it's asked for in plan review, it can be upwards of a, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 hit, if you're talking about a vaulted double-check valve or requirements. In some communities, they require the two different lines to be fed separately, separate taps, separate meters, separate, separate backflow preventers. It's tough to, it's tough to get that comment back during plan review. One of the things I'd like to do was, one, get some clarity, maybe, from staff of when the backflow preventers would be required on a domestic line, when they're required on a fire line, and how, get some understanding of how we're, how we're communicating that to those who are submitting plans, prior to them submitting plans.
Mike, you ready to talk on this? I can give you the, the short of that, but he can give you the better details. This is the gentleman, Mike Morrison, our backflow coordinator, that actually has come up with these updates.
Okay, again, my name is Mike Morrison. I'm the backflow coordinator in Public Works. And the question, just to be clear, you were asking about how the plans are reviewed, and what are we doing now to make sure that the contractors know how to install and where to install them, on both fire lines and domestic? Is that correct?
I would say, what are the, what are the standards so that the engineers know when they're required? Because the contractors will build the plan. And then what are the, what are the requirements for domestic lines and fire lines?
Okay. On the domestic lines, any locations that may have a contaminant, anything such as pools, wells, irrigation systems, they're all required to have a backflow preventer on them. The fire lines, they're, you know, everything's regulated by plumbing code, so they are required to have double checks or RP backflow preventers just based on the type of hazard. So when it comes to the contractors knowing what to install, I currently review the plans, and if anything's needed or a situation presents itself with possible contaminants, when you think about a fire line, that water is sitting in the pipe and is stagnant at all times, so it's not moving, so you would have to have a backflow preventer on that. And it's regulated by TCEQ and plumbing codes, international plumbing.
Yes, sir. I guess my question is, with respect to the criteria, and I'll just go to our EDCM, section 3.2.13, water meter services. Backflow prevention devices shall be installed in line with private water meter service line on all commercial developments, irrigation meters, and shall be installed in applications with City of Pearland's plumbing code or its latest revision so requires. So would we interpret that as any commercial development is required to put a backflow preventer at the meter?
No, sir. Not all commercial developments, but commercial developments that would have the potential of having contaminants or cross connections in that building, that's the only time those developments would need it. So every location would not be considered a high-hazard location. So, every location would not be considered a high hazard location.
We'd say, middle school that has a lab, that's got a contamination possibility, manufacturing facility that's got, that use makeup water, that's got a contamination possibility.
Yes, sir.
And then there's specific, the specific uses such as hospitals or medical use facilities, the TCEQ states it has to have an RPZ. I guess where I'm, I'm kind of driving, obviously, and this is a much needed, you play a very important role to the health and safety of our citizens. And that is preeminent, is ensuring that everybody has clean drinking water. I think the secondary concern is, how do we predict when this is needed? Particularly for small businesses, if they're, you know, if, if you're doing a three-inch line, it has a three-inch backflow preventer, which some small businesses may have to do. It's a really expensive item. It's tough to, to understand that, it's, the way our criteria is written right now, it's tough to understand that preemptively. If you have a good consultant, they can, they know they ask, ask that question early, but I can promise you that most don't. So I'd like to do is, maybe in, kind of dovetail if we pass this ordinance, which I presume will pass. If we can have a rider in the EDCM that states specifically what uses require a double check backflow preventer? What uses require an RPZ backflow preventer? What standards are there for the RPZ? It being caged and locked, I think is what we would want to require, since that material tends to be stolen a lot. Somebody will come out with a reciprocating saw and take the, take the metal off the RPZ. And then whether or not on a fire line, whether we would allow for the fire code, and I believe it's provision of the fire code, that dictates that the, the double check can be in the riser room of the commercial building, as opposed to having to vault it exterior of the building. It would be my preference that it be in the building, but I know that there's going to be maybe some line distance that comes into play. You don't want to have a long line with stagnant water. But if you force it exterior to the building, if we make the decision where it, it has to be exterior to the building, we have to be conscious of the fact that we're taking something that's in a riser room that's already planned and putting it exterior of the building in a concrete vault that's not already planned. If we want to say that the all fire lines must have the double check exterior of the building near the meter, I'd just like us to be clear about that so that it's predictable. Because again, if you've, if you've planned the building, you've got the RPZ, or the double check in the building, and you get a comment later, it may be tough to find the room for it, because they're not small. It may be, it may be an expense that's difficult to predict, and, well, probably a minor expense with most commercial buildings, it's still a substantial expense. So, if we could reflect what we're doing here in section three dot two, or in a separate section that's specifically about the, the backflow preventers, I think that would allow, allow a lot of clarity both on staff's end, we, everybody is on, working off the same page, and both on the development community's end and small businesses' end. I'd like to see that, not as a condition of approving this, but maybe shortly thereafter.
Councilman Perez, I'd like to add one item to you, is that during our pre-development meetings with the developers and with commercial entities that come in, these comments and these plans are looked at at that time when the individual comes forth with an idea. So that backflow prevention devices and Michael's group, and therefore then put forth those concerns and those questions at the pre-development stage. So those are discussed at that time.
Yeah, I think that's useful. I think having it, maybe built in suspenders, having it in the criteria manual and readdressing it. I mean, at one time, we weren't really covering impact fees in, in the, in the pre-development meetings, it's going back some time ago. The, the information was available, but you had to dig through and know where it's at. Adding it to the back, or adding to the pre-development meetings helpful, but it also should be, in my opinion, should be in the criteria manual, where most engineers will look for that information, or hope to be able to find that information. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So I'd, Mr. Morrison, if you want to stay up there, just, so I'd emailed you about a couple of concerns with some of the language on the residential side of things. And I guess to maybe add on to that, just some clarification. And this is applying to new and existing, so would this be something that's retroactive on specifically the residential side? I was, from the email that I sent, concerned with maybe some of the fees that might be assessed. Is this something that's retroactive, or maybe that would be for staff to determine, I guess, where these backflow preventers would need to go in residential scenarios?
Well, yes. It would, it would be, just based on our current processes right now, it would be retroactive. We're currently, I guess we're currently just out inspecting and identifying the locations that, that needed. And if, if we do, if the customer do need to add a backflow preventer, we notify them in writing and try to get them to comply.
And I think part of this is just point of clarification, anybody who might just be wondering if somebody, for whatever reason, decides to read through this, you know, if they don't understand, this isn't something that would be mandated on every single point of...
Oh, sir, that's, that's correct. And just only the locations, most of the locations that have, or residential homes that have irrigation systems, like I was saying earlier, swimming pools, or anything that could get contaminants back into the water system.
Okay, all right, thank you.
For the comment, okay.
Mayor, I, I guess, since you're still up there, so we're talking about a registration and admin fee for every property that has a pool or a irrigation system?
No, sir, we're, we're talking about, the registration fee would be for the certified testers. Any tester that wants to test in the City of Pearland, they would have to register with us just to verify that they do meet the criteria and have the proper credentials to do the testing. So, that wouldn't have anything to do with the customers.
And then in terms of, you know, plan review, I see how we're going to catch it on the front end, but, so it sounds like we're out inspecting current businesses and we're requiring them to come up to this, this code now?
Yes, sir, well, what we're doing is identifying the locations, so we will be up to speed in doing, doing the current inspections with the, which the state of Texas require us to do. So we'll document the location, if there's nothing needed, nothing's further done about that.
And I guess there were some numbers tossed around, do we have any idea on the impact, I guess, a small business that may have an irrigation system that doesn't have a backflow? Or, because it, I know legal doesn't like the term grandfather, but it sounds like there's no grandfathering in this. And, and, you know, your, your staff will show up and, and I assume give them some, some information, and they're going to call up a local plumbing company. Are we talking about a thousand dollar event, a five thousand dollar event?
On a typical install, just based on the size, it could be anywhere from eight hundred dollars to maybe a thousand dollars, just based on the size. We're talking about residential, though. But on the commercial sides, it could be anywhere from two to three thousand, maybe four thousand, just based on the sizes. But all the, all the stats and all the locations that I've been visiting in Pearland, the majority of them already have them there. So, it's not very many that would be impacted. So I don't, I don't think it would be a big impact on that.
Well, I probably won't be on council, but we're going to get some phone calls, and I get, I mean, the story that's not told is we're essentially getting our hand forced by the TCEQ. Anything that we could do to lighten that, that blow, I mean, we're, we're the ones that are out there enforcing this. So I, I guess I would ask back to legal and staff, is there anything we can do in this to still abide by TCEQ rules, but, but give some relief or something to the small business that, that might be struggling, that might be on five eighteen fixing up their road rebuilt in front of them? We're going to knock on the door and say, hey, you need to, you know, spend two or three grand or more?
I'll let Public Works chime in if, if they disagree with what I'm about to say. But, it's my understanding that they sort of did that already, because there are some communities where they'll charge permit fee to the residents. For instance, residential connections that would require backflow. But, in this particular case, the ordinance would not be charging a permit fee to them. Everything's been put off onto the technicians that would be doing the work, to be certified, to be able to operate in Pearland and do that. Is that correct?
That is correct. And just to know what one of the main drivers behind this is, and that really is our focus, one of the main drivers behind this was, we have actually run across, and Mike says he's built this program, because we didn't have one. We actually ran across people that were testing in Pearland that had credentials that were expired and even forged. And that's, I won't go into more details than that, because there's all litigation, but that actually started popping up. And that's one of our focuses this year, is to start seeing who's testing, the big part of it, who's testing, and make sure they're actually legal. Because they have to be certified, just like the watering utility operators.
To follow up on your, the other item you raised, Councilmember Carbone, was essentially, you mentioned the term grandfathering. And, and we do have grandfathered rights, but typically those are in the context of land use in our Unified Development Code. They wouldn't typically apply to city code and ordinances, or especially any ordinances where we're sort of, have oversight by a state agency. It was really, like you said, forcing our hand to make sure that we have a program like this to protect the public water system. So, I don't know that there's anything we can do from, from that perspective. I mean, the, the costs are what they are, they're real costs that, that obviously people will incur. I, I don't know any better way to answer that, so, thank you.
Is there, is there neighborhoods, so, I guess what I'm looking for, is there like a year that you're targeting for like neighborhoods that were built? So like, most of the newer stuff's probably going to have it.
Right.
But, so is there like neighborhoods or something that we're targeting that would probably be prior to this that need to have it?
From what I've seen, most of the areas, they won't need them, need it because they fall under the current plumbing code. So, any resident, residential location that has no alternate water use, they really won't be required to do anything. But no particular neighborhoods, no special neighborhoods.
Is there any section of business areas that will probably be more likely to not have it than to have it?
Sure. I would say, oh, is it Old Town, if I'm saying that correct off of five eighteen? Some of the smaller businesses over there, they don't have it at the meter, but some of them do have it inside. So that's the purpose of going through, performing the CSI inspections, just to ensure that we're not requiring anybody to install anything that's not necessary.
We, we have a, I happen to have a plumber in the audience, so, Roland, if I could borrow you for a second? Something like this, like irrigation line, if you'll come up to the mic, please. And then please state your name and address, purpose the record.
My name's Roland Cabasos, I'm with A Better Plumbing, I live at thirty four oh two McLean, I almost forgot my address.
So let's say I called you and said, hey, I just got this letter from the city, I've got a half inch line on my irrigation system. It's an old house, doesn't have a backflow preventer, they tell me I have to put it in, or I face a fine. What, what would you charge to install something like that?
Well, houses use a pressure vacuum breaker on the irrigation system. It's, it's a PVB, smaller device, all irrigation lines are generally one inch. It's not a big fee. We normally charge about four hundred bucks, put one in with the parts, and then our tester has to come in and certify it, another two hundred bucks. So a house, six fifty and it's done, yeah.
Let's say if it was a, a business, maybe in Old Town, had a two inch line, found out that they were doing something in there that required backflow prevention, what, what would something like that cost?
A two inch would be probably like around eighteen hundred bucks.
About three inch when you get into vaulted?
Three inch, you get in vaults, I mean, you're getting up into thirty thousand dollar range, you're right about that, and, and I know you know the numbers, yeah. Yeah, fire lines and anything you get into vaulted boxes, they're usually, they usually have to be fabricated, and, and they also have to be, you know, certified.
And, thank you, Roland, I appreciate it.
No problem. End it?
Yes, sir. Mike, if I can borrow you again, do we anticipate that we're going to have any three inch meters, or three inch lines that are existing businesses? They're not remodeling, they're not doing anything significant that would trigger it as part of permitting? Do you anticipate that they, we would have any of those existing businesses that would need to incur this cost?
Oh, sir, not, not at this time, and from what I've seen, it's no locations that would require anything three inch and up.
Do we have an idea of how many homes that may have existing residential irrigation systems that may not have the pressure release valve already installed? That may have to, have we done an inventory of that, or we have an idea? Maybe we've done a small area and we projected that percentage across town?
Yes, sir. We have, the City of Pearha, Pearland has approximately thirty, thirty-seven thousand meters. And out of that thirty-seven thousand, only found around, let me, let me get the exact number.
Why are you looking for that? I mean, as I read through this, every residential house has to be tested annually? I, I'd ask, I'd pull a councilman up here, do you have an irrigation system? When's the last time you had your backflow preventer tested? What, what kind of can of worms are we getting into? I mean, I've, I've never had mine tested, and I got a pool, so apparently that constitutes it as well. I mean, this is, no knock against you, I, I completely get what you're doing from the commercial side, but am I missing something? Or we're going to go out and knock on every door that has a swimming pool and every, you drive around at three in the morning, if there's an irrigation system, we're going to, we're going to tag them and send them a nasty letter saying, hey, you got to get it tested annually?
No. We won't be doing that.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's how I read it, is, is every homeowner is required to get it tested annually?
That's every homeowner with a irrigation system, or a pool, or alternative water source, or well, or something like that. But I was getting ready to give you some numbers, and what I came up with was thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-two water meters. That's residential water meters. Out of that, we had two hundred and three residential sprinkler water meters, which are different from just, you know, your, your average meter. And out of all those, I found that we had approximately six thousand two hundred forty-six that were actually combined water meters. And when I say combined, it's providing domestic and irrigation water. So the meters aren't separate, and you're servicing, like I said, your water line and the, the irrigation. So, those would be the ones we would actually focus on, which is only about sixty-four hundred houses combined. So I don't, I don't know if, if, if I'm making it clear enough to where every residential home, we're not going to be looking at every residential home to get them to install backflow preventers, all right? So, the ones that would pose a threat to the water system with the irrigation, the pools, or anything that could get contaminants back into the system, that's what we'll be focusing on.
So I've got an irrigation system and a pool, so I've got, I've got two backflows, never been tested. So I'm going to get dinged twice at some point? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, you'll have to get them tested.
Okay.
But what we'll do, we'll provide a list of testers that we've approved and certified, and they could come out and give you a, give you a quote to get them tested. And by providing that list, what that does is, it makes the pool competitive, so the price of two hundred dollars might not necessarily be two hundred dollars.
All right, this appears to be a nightmare from my standpoint, but I'll let it to somebody else.
I mean, as I understand, we don't really have a choice, right?
We don't have a choice.
So, I mean, it's one of the many things the state has dictated upon us, but I think the backflow prevention is necessary. I just don't know, unless we are going to adopt a program with internal staff to go do these inspections and another portion, dedicate a portion of our enterprise fund to install these on behalf of the residential owners, I don't really know a better way. I mean, we can certainly entertain it, but I think with our, our budget being what it is, having, have to go out there and pay for sixty-four hundred one inch backflow preventers that better part of a thousand apiece, make it yelled at. I don't, I don't, I don't really know, there's a great... Make it yelled at. I don't, I don't, I don't really know if there's a great solution. I think it's a necessary component. Appreciate staff's work on it. One of those messes that built over time, gotta deal with it, probably not a good way to deal with it. Just doing the best we can.
Mayor, uh, Councilman, it may be a good clearance, and tell them, remind us all what's required and what we don't have a choice about. I hear the, you know, we've been sending out the notes and, you know, trying to lay the groundwork. Mike's been on for better part of two years, you know, building up some of the program and getting us in this position. But you need to state again what's required, what we're doing and how we're going about this, so.
Well, the, the language on it is just very clear. Anytime that there's a potential or contamination, and that's just how it's written in the, the Clean Water Act and the SDA, the Safe Drinking Water. And, and this, for us, this comes into, I mean, we know the obvious in the commercial, like you mentioned earlier, the schools, things like that with labs, chemicals. But for some people that have, and these combined systems are particularly concerning because that is a potential. But what really comes down to is we're trying to get ahead of it. Everybody remembers what happened in Corpus Christi a couple of years ago with Valero. That was due to a backflow incident. The city of Corpus Christi, at 350,000 people, did not have a backflow program at all. They were kinda in the same boat as us. They had some things that were captured in their plumbing code that were kinda old. They just kinda didn't deal with it at all. And then, and everybody remembers what happened. It hit the news. Next thing you know, there's a detergent in the line and they were scrambling. And they, they were in the same boat. Do we do this? Do we get testers? Do we certify the testers? They actually asked the same question, Councilman Perez, about, you know, do we get our own people on board to do this? And ultimately it came down to, let's just tighten up our, our code of ordinances as they are. Let's make the, you know, have the testing requirements, make sure the people are registered and apply it to, apply what we already have. Clean it up a little bit, which is what we're trying to do through pre-development and things like that. Let's look at it, clean it up. Um, we're not saying it's perfect, but right now we pretty much, as you mentioned, it's a mess. And we're trying to start somewhere. Basically, if there is a source, if there is a, the real part of it, if there's a potential for contamination, we have to have the backflow prevention and the testing. And again, we're the, most of the fees that we're proposing is to certify, to certify and regulate the testers, not the residents. Now, they will have costs incurred to get them installed, things like that. But that's not what we're having fees for the residents from us.
Just to clarify, not just installed, but annual testing?
There's an annual testing. If you have one that is required by ordinance or required under the plumbing code, depending on the application, that's already there. There is an annual testing. That's already being done. A lot, we have found that a lot of our residents, as Mike has gone out and start trying to build this program and start it, have them in place and have actually been getting them tested. And this is really the heart of what is, what sprung up in our faces as we started getting, looking at their certificates and finding out that there was false certificates out there. People that actually weren't licensed were charging our residents for testing, giving them a certificate. They were turning it into us. And that was kind of the driver behind getting this to make it a real clean ordinance.
I've got a question also kind of related to some of this on the ones that may not have currently backflow preventers in place. And I saw Mr. Hardy here earlier. Is he still here or is he? Well, I, so I know that, uh, there are programs through HGAC, for instance, that help to fund septic system upgrades, replacements, things like that within Missouri County. Is there some type of program we can build into this communication plan that we're putting together to help educate the public? That if they may not have something, that there's a program that, for low income individuals to potentially help, uh, install these things?
Not to be crass or whatever, I'm gonna say it. We're talking about irrigation system and a pool, so I don't know that that population is gonna overlap with CDBG type funding, so.
It's entirely possible. I mean, some of these people are one paycheck away. I mean, they could lose a job, single payer household. I mean, it's, I'm just curious.
We can research that. I don't know anything off the top of my head. Mike's, this is actually what he does for a living. He might know. But we can certainly check into that. I mean, like you mentioned, they kind of have programs for everything else. I don't see why this is something we can't investigate.
Thank you.
Any idea what these annual tests cost? I also have a pool and an irrigation system, so I probably have two backflow. Each year I'm gonna have to have tested by one of your certified testers. And I see you're charging a $40 city fee to that tester for every test he performs, so that's gonna be obviously added to our fee. So any idea what that fee's gonna be so I can adjust my budget?
In all seriousness, I, Councilman, I have seen them range from about $75 to about 125, 130. Mike's shaking his head, yes, so I don't think I'm lying to you.
Just to be clear, if I could, uh, the $40, is that per event or per inspector, one time?
Uh, that's per tester.
Tester. I don't think it's gonna be on every incident, every inspection. We, we certify the testers? There's a hundred of them or something that's been certified?
Yes.
We don't get into charging like for your pool and your neighbor's?
Bring in multiples into one that's just to access the system, I think is what it said. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, sir. We're not, we're not gonna be skimming off of your fees.
So, um, I think what, um, so, so, so we understand what the program is. Cause I, I think maybe from the write-up, it wasn't as clear. It's not, it's not really what I took from it, but I appreciate the clarification. So what we're saying is, we have 100 testers. We want to certify those testers to be able to perform the test in the city of Pearland. Each person that wants the certification so that they're allowed to perform the test in the city of Pearland pays an annual fee of $40. Is that?
No.
Okay.
The registered tester pays a fee of $100. It's a registration fee of $100. The testers will pay that fee.
Annually for them to have the right?
Annually to have the ability to test in Pearland.
And the $40 is for what specific?
The $40 will come to us as a maintenance fee for administrative, administrative purposes for us, you know, taking in the test reports, tracking the test reports and using it on our, um, for them to be able to access our, um, online forms.
Who do we charge the $40 and for when?
The tester.
Okay, but as part of the annual fee? So they pay four, $100 plus $40?
No, sir.
So they pay $100 and $40 out of that goes towards?
It says $40 fee per test.
Per test.
Each time someone has a, a tester goes out and tests a home or a business, it's gonna cost $40 for that test.
No, sir.
That's what it says. It says.
It's gonna, it's gonna.
Backflow assembly testers, a separate $40 fee per test.
The fee for, I'm sorry, the fee for, the $40 fee will come to the city of Pearland.
Right.
For us to maintain our online database and records. You know, I'll maintain the system. The $100 will register the tester to test in Pearland. And with, you know, through that, I'll be able to verify their information and their condit, their credentials.
So let's say that a tester goes out, they've spent the money, they're certified, they go out and they do five tests that day. When they come to the city of Pearland to access our web-based application, do they pay a single $40 fee to access the, the application for all five, or do they pay five individual $40?
They pay five individual $40.
Okay.
So to clarify, it's $40 per test?
Per test.
Per test.
Well, it's gonna be more than that because that's just, that's just for them to, to pay for the, to register the test. They're gonna charge us to do the test and then probably a markup on the $40.
Right.
We know that, but it's $40 per test.
So if somebody's not gonna show up and test it for 75 bucks, because that means they're giving 40 to the city and they're keeping 35? So, yeah, this is.
Good luck getting that fee.
I mean, I, I guess, what, what, I mean, we don't, if we don't charge a fee, what's the alternative?
So.
Can I do it?
Can I address, uh, maybe that question? So thi, this program is intended to be self-funding or self-sufficient. So, um, by, by the folks that are required by law to have backflow preventers and then the subsequent testing. That's the purpose for the, the registration fee as well as the administrative fee per test. And, and, and the alternative is, you know, we absorb this into our, um, enterprise fund. And everybody that doesn't require, is it not required to have a backflow preventer? Um, and the annual testing is in subsidizing those that have the sprinklers and the pools and things like that, uh, that, that do require testing. So that's the only real viable alternative I see. Uh, or we stand up, um, our own testers and then we charge what it costs to run that, you know, uh, for Mr. Morrison and everyone that works for him to, uh, to administer that program.
Those are three options.
I got one other question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking here and I, I think this, the certification form that I'm looking at on TCQ website talks about no pipe or pipe fitting which contains more than 8% lead exists in private water distribution facilities installed on or after July 1st, 1988 and prior to January 4th, 2014. So are we also looking at lead pipe?
I believe you're looking at the CSI.
Yes.
Form.
Yes.
So that would be part of the inspection for us to, to look at and review and, uh, identify any, any lead piping or anything else that would be in the system. And that's just a part of that CSI form, right?
Yeah, there's other criteria on here, even for, uh, solder and flux which contains more than 2% or 0.2% lead.
That's correct.
Let me just switch gears because I think there's three of us here that have, um, uh, at least three of us that have irrigation systems and pools. And it's never been, it's never been, uh, communicated to us about the inspection system that it's been in place. So subsequent to this, how are we going to be reaching out to, uh, the community to let them know that this inspection is required? I'll be fair, I, I've lived in my house 10 years with both and I, and I've never, I've never heard anybody ask.
Sure, and I think, uh, our lack of a backflow prevention program is, is why. Um, our lack of that up to this point. So with the implementation of this, I'll let, uh, Mr. Morrison answer the question as to how we plan to communicate.
Okay. We, we will plan on communicating through our website. Uh, the city of Pearland has a, um, backflow website. We also have, um, flyers that are planning to go out and mail in search during the water bills. And, uh, then we'll be doing some community type events to, um, get the, get the word out, working with the communication department.
So what's the punitive measure to encourage people to do this? So let's say, you know, I don't, I don't look at the website and I, and ignored the flyer, uh, for four, five years.
And I would suggest we, we do have a list of 6,000 plus folks that we know need to have, or need to have them in place. And if they already have them in place, need them to be tested. So we could do some more targeted, uh, communication with, with those known ones. But beyond that, what, what would be the punitive, punitive, that part of the question?
I guess we'll need some clarification. So if, if y'all, if y'all mailed me and told me there's a website and said, hey, you need to have this annual inspection. I have two, uh, two backflow preventers already in place. You have to have them inspected and I ignore it. Um, and I continue to ignore it, then what's, um, what, what, what are measure are we going in to enforce and ensure that they are doing the inspection?
Are there code enforcement portions of the ordinance?
It, it is, and you could be fined or your water could be terminated or shut off because you aren't, um, because you aren't in compliance.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
But that's, that's something, you know, we're, we're not trying to do anything like that. But we do wanna, um, get the word out and sure everybody's, um, complying.
Yeah. Once we get the word out, once we get the word out, I mean, what's, are we, are we asking for the residents to do this immediately? Are we giving them a time period to do this? Uh, what, what are we doing?
Yes, sir. We're gonna give them at least, uh, 30 to 60 days to get it done initially. And then after that, they would have to do it, um, annually.
Let me ask you something. There's been a lot of conversation all across the board on this. Tony, they're not gonna get you to after July. You get off council and they're gonna come get, get, get you. Uh, so you have to get, uh, to be certified, it's a $100 cost to be certified. Number one, are we gonna have a list of those that are certified, uh, that we can choose from or the city will recommend, uh, to come out and do the inspection?
Well, we're got, we're gonna provide the customer a list of, of testers. Right now, we have like 197 testers that they could actually, um, testers and plumbers that they could actually choose from. So we don't necessarily endorse anybody. But we do certify that they do have the proper license and, and, uh, insurance and meet all the criteria.
Okay, so an individual comes out, he's gonna charge you $75 or $100 coming out to your house to look at it. Number one, that's what the last one charged me, need to, be wanted inspection. Plus they're gonna put on their top of their $40 fee that goes back to the city. And the person that does the inspection has to turn in a report to the city and give them the $40, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's whatever it costs, uh, for somebody to come out there plus the fee on it, but, uh, and, and that's on a yearly basis.
It's annual, yes, sir, one time a year.
Okay.
I'm excited to see how Josh covers this in the council roundup.
Um, I mean, I think in the end, we gotta do it. I mean, I don't think we have a choice. And it's gonna be sloppy because we're gonna have to do things retroactively. I don't really know of a better, I mean, we could certainly entertain one of the other two options that, um, Trent Uperson brought up, but I think in the end, we're probably not going to look at an option where the city swallows the cost. So that has to go to the customer. I mean, I just, it certainly looks bad. I mean, certainly there's, there's things to, to complain about with their system. I just don't know if there's a better way. I mean, it, with respect to inconveniences and annoyances, yeah. If somebody knocking on my door and telling me, you've gotta get this inspection, uh, is a bit of an annoyance. But it's less of an annoyance than when the city says, hey, the entire east side of Pearland has to be on boil water notice. So I, I mean, I'd much rather try and implement this system and stay in compliance than, um, than have something that's inconvenience a few, a few citizens or annoy them, which this will do, uh, than have something that's more, um, more of an issue citywide.
What are we doing with, um, some of our neighbors here that are in the county?
I'm sorry?
What are we doing with some of the neighbors that are like in the county? I mean, don't, don't they have the opportunity to, uh, cross-contaminate a, somebody that's living near them that is in the city? Specifically, specifically like Silver Lake area?
Silver Lake, they are, they do have a backflow program there. I get a lot of their, um, test reports from occasion that I actually have to send over to the, to the county. But if they're not on our water system and we're not supplying them water, then, um, we don't have to.
I understand that, but I could have a neighbor, I'm in the city, my neighbor that's in the backyard, that's, shares a backyard with me is not in the city, but they have a pool, they can cross-contaminate my water.
But let's clarify, like, the Silver Lake area is not on the city's water system? And anybody that's on the city's water system would be subject to this program?
And Silver Lake would have their own independent water line that would not connect to ours.
Right.
So that you could be back, you could be, he could be your backdoor neighbor and you could be connected to a municipal line. But if it's in their mud, the mud has to do their backflow prevention system. We have to do ours. Those lines don't connect because of this issue, because of the backflow prevention issue.
Am I kinda tying this to vaccination? We do vac, vaccination to protect the citizens in our community from, uh, being contaminated, uh, catch something like chicken pox. But, uh, if, if I don't wanna do it, it's okay with me, but, but you have to do it because it protects, in this case, water system. Instead of, uh, vaccination, the, uh, people who catch, be transmitted and receive contaminants like chicken pox and stuff like that. So it has a similarity there. And in my mind is what I'm hearing when I'm, when I'm listening to all of this. So it's, uh, if there's some way to make sure that the bad water and bad sources don't leak into the water system for me to drink later. Your source from you, you have created but not having this, uh, change in your system. Am I getting close on that?
That's correct. You, you're close. You're there.
I mean, all these guys know what they're talking about, but me, I'm just a old country boy, so I have to kind of tie it to something I understand. I don't understand, but don't, 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 don't wanna see continued contaminated the citizens in our community, but, uh, also protect themselves as well, maybe by putting that in. Anyway.
Mayor, can I get one more clarification? I'm still torn up about this Corpus Christi thing. That story doesn't.
That story doesn't work in my mind for my half inch or one inch PVC pipe going to my pool. So if we can't, it sounds like we're, we're handcuffed from TCQ, but give us some story or something that Josh can run with because I, I can't, I can't get from Corpus Christi or the half east side of Pearland because I've got the potential of a little bit of chlorine coming back through my pool fill line or a little bit of fertilizer coming through an irrigation system. So you don't have to answer it now, but somehow, because I, I'm going to get this question all the time. First of all, hey, somebody's knocking on my door trying to scam me and test some backflow preventer. And then I'm going to have to say, no, that's correct, and then justify it. And I, I'll get shot if I use the Corpus Christi example. So help, help me understand it a little bit better, or, or Josh, so we can put it out there. Because this, everybody up, has anybody had their backflow preventer tested? Nobody here, even including city manager. You have a irrigation system? I mean, this is, this is just ridiculous. And, and we're all going to hear about it, and we just need to be prepared.
I hear you, and, and this goes under big of growing pains. It sounds like, I mean, if you look online real quick, Sugar Land has a program and we're probably, we're late to the game. This arguably should have been done years ago, and so we're catching up and that's part of the problem. But, you know, if this was automatic and been done for years, we'd all just be in the background and we'd be doing it. I don't love the idea of getting that extra done, and every year seems overkill to me frankly, but that's what the cars were dealt with, so. Unless somebody could tell me that we can get away with not doing that, you know, you know, try not to find the worst case stories. But the other piece of it is, you know, not being compliant with TCQ and getting in trouble and fines for all of us that way too, so.
I have just one other question, and I'll leave this alone. I, I just. So I'm, I'm looking on TCQ site where, where it talks about, can I install a black, a backflow preventions assembly? So it's a flow chart. It's a flow appendix A of RG 478. The last piece on there, it says a homeowner, the assembly on your, if the assembly is on your homestead and you obtain a homeowner's permit if required, what, what does that mean? Because that's telling me I can do it and I don't need y'all's approval or your fees or your permits or licenses to do it.
That's correct. You, you can install it. A homeowner can install it. However, he would have to be, get a certified tester to come out and certify that it was, it is in proper working condition.
That, that sounds like it's very similar to the building codes where a home, if you have a homestead on the property, you're allowed to do electrical and plumbing work without being a certified or licensed electrician or plumber.
In houses built in Pearland in the last 10 years, was it code that these irrigation systems and pools had to have a backflow preventer?
Yes, sir. I've researched back 10 years and I found permits where these locations have been, or they do have backflow preventers there. A lot of them, whether they're working at this time, I'm, I'm not sure, but I did go back 10 years. I found that this, this been in pla, it's been in place over 10 years there.
It's not the install cost, it's the, it's the damn annual testing and fees. I mean, that's, and I don't know, just my gut, I think you said 6,000 combination domestic irrigation? That seems low to me, but I, I don't know, out of 35,000 meters?
Yeah, yes, sir. That, I mean, that's the information I, I received from our permitting, our utility billing. I actually verify now, if we want to start counting Savannah and some of the places in ETJ, you know, it'll go up to 10,000 easy, but we don't maintain the water system.
I don't think that number sounds unusual because the plumbing codes required backflow preventers for quite a while, probably at least 15 years.
No, but I'm talking about the annual testing.
Yeah.
There's only 6,000.
No, he's saying 6,500 have cross, have a irrigation meter that is tapped on the water line downstream of the water meter. It's not tapped separately, which is a great thing for us because they're paying for the sanitary as well every time they water them on. So they're actually, they're actually getting a deal, or we're getting a deal. But I think the 6,400, that's older homes that did this probably before we were enforcing a plumbing code or we didn't have much of a plumbing code when our town was probably 20,000, 25,000.
So I guess to clarify, 60, 6,500, I guess, tell me how many, how many backflow preventers are out there on the residential side is our best guess?
That is, that's the number that I have, a total of 64,000, around that number.
6,400, I mean, that.
That's just on residential.
Right. Still, that seems, that seems low. So 20% of our homes, only 20% have irrigation systems and/or pools? And I guess where I'm getting at that is at 6,400, that's $250,000 of annual fees we're going to be getting. If, if that number is, you know, double, then we could cut the annual fee in half to raise the same amount of revenue.
That's residential only. We're just residential.
Again, I don't know how, how we get a good handle on that, but just from gut feel, 20%, that seems low. And then number of houses that have irrigation or a pool.
I mean, at this point, I think we, we beat it. Either we call the question or we, we send staff back and let them, let them go get some more information. So, I mean, does anybody else wish to postpone this item?
You know, some of it, if you're worried about getting scammed out there, you know, is there any way that they can do out and do the inspection and then give you a copy of the inspection sheet and it goes to the city? And, or you can come in and pay the city the $40 and show that you have been inspected and, at a certain date. And then the city can program that into theirs and know that on a yearly basis, this was when it's done last. Because, you know, we've got some smart people out there. They're going to come in and, and say they're going to inspect you and take the money to go out and do the inspection plus the 40 bucks out of it, and the city maybe never get it. And you're just strung out for the money.
That's the purpose of, of having them register and collect all of their data. We'll have all that information. So we're currently doing it now. I mean, we're, we're getting test reports from residential and commercial locations now, so. Been a couple of incidents, but we were able to catch those and.
Mayor, we, I mean, we've kind of, we've gone through it. Unfortunately, we can't change it. We, we're going to have to do something. And it's unfortunate as well because we already have a, a water situation where our residents are paying high prices just in their regular water bill. So now going to hit, get hit again, but I'm going to call the question. We can go ahead and vote.
It's a little bit out of line, but just remind, this is just first reading. I don't know that the guts, the ordinance is going to change a lot. We won't get it back to you next week. You got a meeting, but by June, in between, we'll get you a Thursday packet that has some more of the background questions that adds to the last couple of memos we sent out as well.
Fair enough. Second, second call question.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Mike, thank you very much. Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Motion passed six to, six to one.
Is that item two? Read the next item. I believe we have some more items on the agenda. Item, move to item number two, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. See how long this one takes. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-77, so move.
We have a motion and a second on the floor and.
Thanks, sir. The city contracts out for professional cleaning services for our various office buildings and facilities. We bid this out three years ago, I believe, and recommending renewal with the incumbent firm, A&amp;A Cleaning Services, as described in the packet there.
Does anyone have a question or comment on that?
I do, Mayor. A&amp;A Cleaning Services, do they have option to renew the contract? Is that why we're going back with them?
One more time, sorry.
They have an option for renewal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and did we, we weren't allowed to go out and seek competitive bids on the options?
We, you know, they've been performing, and so we're in the third year of that renewal. So that's part of the deal. People, the vendors and us know that as long as they perform, we'd seek to renew at the same prices rather than going out and bidding again.
I complete your comment.
I would just say.
Any other comments?
I would just say, just briefly, I mean, this is what we've, this is what we've asked for and tried to motivate our council to award contracts to local, local vendors who give back to the community. So, you know, I, I think a good chunk of this money is going to circulate back in some of the charities and organizations. So I think this is, that's secondary to the, the company performing. But if they're performing and it's local and they're charitable, I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Okay. And the good news is our local vendors, you did a good job. Any other comments, councilman? Item Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item three, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-105, so move.
Second.
Do I have a second on that? Your motion and a second, and staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a substantial contract award as described in the write-up. We're committed to keeping our sanitary sewer system as tight as possible so there's not infiltration during rain events, which add costs and lots of different ways for the wastewater plants and the production there. So we're committed and have a very good program where we analyze different areas, measure dry weather flows and then wet weather flows, and then target specifically the, the worst areas so we can apply different kinds of techniques for the sealing of those lines, whether it be the manholes or the pipes themselves. As you see in the write-up, this renewal actually straddles two different fiscal years, gets us through the rest of this fiscal year, and then into May with the estimated amounts that are described there based upon activity in the past.
Council, have any questions about the staff report?
I do. On this one, I go through and I'll see that. I was looking at the numbers on here, and IPR had a total bid of 283,473.35. And Reliance Construction had a bid of 183,370.20. And we selected IPR, which is almost $100,000 higher. Any reason for that?
We did that probably two years ago, and I don't know if you've got the background on that.
Sure. So in the bid and award section, it's detailed out that this was to get the, the bids were to get the unit prices of the work. And then those unit prices were applied to multiple sample projects, typical projects that we do with the different types of I&amp;I rehabilitation work. And IPR was the low bidder on four of the seven sample projects. And so that was part of the evaluation of the bids when they originally submitted. So they were awarded that contract when it was originally awarded, and it's been, was renewed last year, and this is the third and final renewal. We'll rebid it next year.
Okay, and if you go and look at the bid prices on some of these, and you look at the first one, the general conditions, I think Reliance is 26,000, and then IPR was at 35,000. On there, but it seems like that every task order has mobilization price to it. And for the inspection and cleaning mobilization per task order, it's $500 on that from the other. And actually, on the other one that, that we're looking at, IPR at 15,000. And then you go to the mobilization per task order, and Reliance had 3,000, IP had, or 2,000. It seemed like everything we do, we get a new mobilization off of that. And it just seems high that, that we're doing a new mobilization on every task order that we send out. We've got a, a high mobilization price that goes with it, and especially on, on the first one there on the bid. Now, that's probably the inspection cleaning, but mobilization per task order. And it shows to be $15,000 for mobilization. Any explanation on that?
So every time we issue a task order, it's going to be in a specific area, a specific basin. And when they move to a new task order, they've got to move every, all their equipment and remobilize and redo their CCTV inspection and cleaning as part of that separate task order.
Yeah, so if.
So that was accounted for in the different scenarios that were evaluated with the original bids.
So if we issue a task order and they're on a certain project out there and they moved down a quarter of a mile or a half a mile down, we're going to pay another 15,000 mobilization for moving it down there? I mean, that's, that's the first time, Trent, I've seen these types of mobilization costs coming in. You know, in construction, you get one mobilization cost unless you shut.
Well, construction's generally a single construction site, as whereas this is, we issue task orders for different, work for different areas. So Mr. John Hines is here tonight. He's our superintendent. He may be able to answer the parameters of that. If they move, you know, a couple hundred feet down to the next area, I don't, I would assume we do not pay a remobilization. But if we move to a new distinct area, then there's possibly a new mobilization fee.
I will say real quick while he's approaching the podium that we've been averaging about four to five, no more than five mobilizations on one of their contracts. So it's not a super regular thing where, you know, every week or every couple of weeks they're mobilizing, demobilizing. And I'll let John answer any of your direct questions now.
So again, speaking on that, the mobilization fees are only charged out during the task orders, which we move them from, if we're in the same neighborhood, say Sherwood and Nottingham, that is considered as one task order. So they're completing that whole section of pipe bursting and manhole rehabilitation. If they had to move, say, the subdivision of like Corrigan, yes, then we do pay that mobilization fee for them moving across that way. But in the same subdivision as we have been having IPR, they only been charging us task orders when they have to move from out of their general location that we have them at.
Okay, it just seems like, I don't, I don't know how much equipment they have to take with them going to each mobilization. I mean, it should be the same thing, and you just get it, drive it to another location. But it seems like 15,000 is a, is a heck of a note.
I think the other thing to consider is on that task, that mobilization where we have the 15,000, that's, that's for the closed circuit television inspection and cleaning mobilization. Whereas the pipe bursting is $3,000, the cast in place is $2,000. So it depends on what the task order is, how much that mobilization is as well.
Okay, and then maybe explain what the general conditions are, because that's 35,000 with the low bid here. Or not the low bid, the high bid. It says general conditions and it's $35,000 for general conditions. I don't know what that would consist of.
Let Andrea answer that directly, but I believe that's insurance, but I don't want to lie to you on that.
Councilmember Owens, that is typically the insurance and bonds and any of the other overhead costs for that contract. for that contractor to complete the work.
All right, so general conditions then would be for the bonding for the total amount of two eighty-three on there. It just seemed kind of odd that that we had two hundred and eighty-three thousand, and then Reliance Construction had one hundred and eighty-three thousand. And we went with two eighty-three.
Councilman, if I could respond to that. In this scenario, this is a number of different bid items that we might use for rehabilitation work. When each of these scenarios was put together and costs assembled for most likely work that we would encounter during that year, the contract, IPR was the best price for the most likely scenarios. It's also important for us to get good quality CCTV and good quality so that we can keep that and put that into our future documents and asset management system. And they have provided the best samples for that. And that's been an ongoing positive for the city to have good documentation on before and after for these utilities.
Okay, and so we're asking for a total amount of two point one five oh million dollars?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's based on past work and what we need to get done. As I mentioned, straddling the two budget years.
Okay, how did, how did you come up with two point one million?
Can I speak on that? That's come from the CIP funding, which for 2019, the city, for CIP, for sanitary sewer rehab, we have one point five million. And for 2020, we have one point five million. Six hundred and fifty thousand of 2019 would go towards IPR. We're doing the pipe rehab contract. And I'm going out, building my structural contract for manhole rehabilitations, which we have failing manholes throughout the city, and eight hundred and fifty thousand will be going for that contract.
Okay, so the task, you've got those lined out of what tasks that needed to be done? Because every one of these are one-item bid type things.
So the, the way that we set up the task orders is from the older infrastructure, what we have from lift stations as far as pump runtimes, and which basin as far as the sanitary sewer plants have the most runtime when we come to heavy rain events and comparison. This program was started in 2016 as we studied from 2015 to see which area was the worst. And right now, we have Berry Rose area, which is the worst as far as the basin that's I and I is developed during heavy rains.
So a lot of this is for I and I type work?
Yes, sir.
I thought a couple of years ago, we just went to a complete I and I program.
This is all I and I. I mean, this is all keeping the system tight, and it's never-ending. I mean, we've targeted the worst areas, and that's what this is. I mean, it's never done, but this is the next area that's got the worst areas, so.
I don't have any other questions.
Just-
Comment on that? Yep.
Just appreciate all you do. It's a, it's a tough job. Very people, very few people appreciate the fact that that helps keep the toilets flush, so thank you very much.
Counsel, have any other question or comment? I don't hear anybody. So, Adam Secretary, we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
In our agenda, item four, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R twenty nineteen dash one two oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion second on the floor, staff report.
Do you want to take the speaker first, Mayor, or?
I'd record the development plan.
We can have the staff report, and then we can bring the speaker up.
Sure. So we had presented a recommendation for a corridor study of the Broadway area. And counsel had some additional questions, and we provided two memos. One from Mr. Epperson just described the timing and the importance of doing it at this juncture. And another piece that had some of the samples. And Mr. Epperson and Mr. Buchanan, I believe, ran a tag team on a background just to illustrate some of the highlights and the rationale for why this is coming to you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Mayor and counsel, Matt Buchanan with the Pearland EDC. Just wanted to start off, this is a direct result of our 2020 strategic plan where we talked about creating a 518 Broadway master development plan. At that time, it wasn't specific on a certain corridor, but we've narrowed that down. And this is similar to the study that we did on 35 about four years ago. And obviously, we've done a lot of work in the 288 corridor and done a master plan for the 288 corridor. So this is a continuation of, of work in our 2020 strategic plan. So back in October, we issued a RFP for services for this. We chose Kimley Horn to do this work, and Michael Feeney with Kimley Horn is here tonight, and Tony Allender with Hawes Hill are both here tonight. The plan will focus on facilitating the reconstruction and widening of Broadway, and we really chose to focus on that area. And so it'll be the area that we'll be focusing in our study on will be from the 288 corridor all the way to Main Street, and then the phase one and phase two that Trent will talk about here shortly correlates to the reconstruction and widening project. So just real high level, your memo goes into much more detail, but the scope of the work, look at background, existing conditions. There'll be a community outreach piece, a community meeting, steering committee, online survey, so there'll be public input in the process. But the real focus will be on the roadway construction widening, and Trent will talk more about that here in a second. Target areas, we've identified three target areas to, to look at that are undeveloped. For the most part, the two areas are undeveloped that could potentially create more economic activity in our corridor. There'll be a total plan that'll wrap everything into. Also going to look at the Veterans to Makawha connection and then do an analysis of Walnut. And so there was a lot of questions last time about the, the fees of four hundred, four thousand, seven hundred. And this just kind of gives you a breakdown of task by hours. And you can see the green there is the roadway reconstruction and widening, which is about thirty-four percent. Streetscape, which was talked about last time, is only about four percent. So we're not really doing any streetscape design here. It'll just address maybe if there should be streetscaping someday in the corridor, similar to what we did in the 35 study, and then we'll come back, and that'll be a separate item at a later date. But then you can just see the plan. The concept areas is about seven percent, Walnut, Makawha, each about five to seven percent. And then the task one's kind of the overall, the meetings and all that's about seventeen percent. So I'll turn it over to Trent here and let him talk a little bit about the reconstruction and widening.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Some of the background on the 518 project, because these large Tech Dot projects do take a long time to bring to fruition, is that they held their first public meeting in May of 2015. They've been working on schematics and environment, the environmental process since that time. And then in 2018, they submitted the project to the Transportation Improvement Program through HGAC for funding. They, at that point, split the project into two phases, the 288 to Cullen Phase and Cullen to State Highway 35, so two different construction phases. Subsequently, when the selection process was completed for the tip, the phase one from 288 to Cullen received funding, thirty-two point four million dollars with an implementation year of 2023. So that really kind of establishes, you know, kind of the, the end of the line for us and backing up from that where things need to take place. Moving forward from that and the, and approaching the conclusion of the environmental process, Tech Dot had their environmental public hearing on March 26, 2019, and that sets the stage for them completing that environmental process later this year. In March of 2019, as the projects were being evaluated for the tip funding, Tech Dot did let us know that they were planning on moving forward with the design work for the entire corridor from 288 to 35, most likely under two different design contracts. So they are currently going through their selection process for the design engineers on that. And they go through a request for qualification project, process, then negotiation of that. So they expect to have those contracts in place early next year, early 2020, to start the actual design. So they'll complete the design consultant selection this year, move into design. I expect that to be somewhere between a, around an eighteen-month, possibly twenty-four-month design process with land acquisition once the environmental is completed, and they have enough information to develop their parcel maps to start sometime during design, most likely in the, in the 2021, 22 phase or timeframe, with construction commencing in 2023 when the funding becomes available. That's all on the phase one. Phase two, so we'll see the design move forward now. And then it's, it'll be determined in the future when they'll move forward with land acquisition and when they'll move forward with construction. It's possible they move forward with land acquisition on a similar track as phase one, but until construction dollars are identified, I, I wouldn't, we can't really pinpoint when that is. Reconstruction and widening, the focus of the corridor development plan is on the effects on individual properties. So we'll be looking at existing setbacks and, and what that does to those existing setbacks, what it does to parking for, for the businesses that have parking potentially within the taking or where we could potentially avoid that. Looking at landscaping and street trees, as well as any change in access for any properties. If, if, if their driveways and their, and their parking lot are impacted, how are, how is that going to change the access to them and the circulation on their property? And then UDC conformity, obviously, if we've got someone that was developed under previous guidelines or even under the current UDC, the setbacks and the things that were put in place at the time they developed are going to be impacted, possibly affecting their conformity with the UDC. So we'll look at that and look at some options on how do we address that kind of a, as a whole? Look at it comprehensively so that each individual property isn't dealing with that anytime they come into the city for any type of expansion renovation or, or something along those lines. And so try to accommodate those all in one fell swoop without, without having to come back for each individual property. And then looking at signage and the impact on the signage as well. One other big thing that we want to have looked at and kind of a hand in is the drainage and detention analysis. Tech Dot's planning on doing a lot of the detention within the court, the transportation corridor, not a whole lot of off, off-channel detention. So we want to look at, at whether or not that makes more sense in some areas. We want to look at the properties that have detention in the front that may be impacted by the widening and how that we make sure that the adequate drainage is put back in place. And then we've got problem areas where drainage outside of the Tech Dot corridor drains to the Tech Dot corridor, through the Tech Dot corridor, and, and, and its way to its receiving stream. And a lot of the times, the restriction that we deal with and are unable to address is the drainage in the 518 corridor. So looking at those and making sure those problem areas are highlighted as well. Utilities analysis, a lot of that will look at, are there any opportunities to where, when the overhead electric gets moved for the roadway, are we able to do anything with those? Whether they go underground, or maybe they're on backlot easements or some other options to where we can maybe get some of that, some of that clutter of the, the overhead lines reduced in the corridor. So the study will look at all those things. And so based on that, based on the timing of where Tech Dot is, if they're starting design next year, we need to have those conversations with Tech Dot this year on what that scope and how it may affect the scope of their design. You know, if we're, if we're asking for certain things, we may, we may have to step up and pay for certain things, but the opportune time to get in on the front end on their design before anything's put down in a final design is to get that conversation going with Tech Dot this year and affect that design as opposed to trying to affect that design after they're well down the, the timeline of, of actually putting pencil to paper and, and developing that design. So our recommendation is to move forward at this point with the corridor development plan that we include Tech Dot in our stakeholder committee so that they understand what we're trying to achieve, they hear the feedback we're hearing, and we try to minimize these impacts throughout the corridor. And where we can't minimize, where there's still going to be impacts that we have some, some places to go or some alternatives to look at, and Tech Dot's looking at those with us. Making sure we coordinate with all the citizens, business owners, the property owners, the Chamber of Commerce, as well as any other public agencies in our jurisdiction that, that uses the corridor or maybe ties into the corridor. And then through that process, establishing regular meetings with Tech Dot to make sure that we include all the recommendations that come out of the Broadway Development Corridor Plan and get those built into their design as opposed to trying to affect their design or retrofit the corridor after the fact. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
So Mayor, just to recap, it is our recommendation that if we're going to do this at all, the timing is now to do that. As we said, we've tried, tried to answer some of the questions that came up, but there's more than enough evidence, I think, and practicality of getting benefit out of this by proceeding at this juncture, so.
You know, we've got a problem with traffic on 518, the state highway. They decided to build it for us. And, you know, it's not going to get any, get any better on traffic because of our growth. It's going to be just getting worse if we don't do something today. So I think it's, we need to follow up, make it happen. Yeah. Counsel.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to bring over, or bring up the individual that'd like to speak to address this item. So Mr. Kevin Cole, if you'll please come to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments, three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
All right. Kevin Cole, 3808 Houston Lake Drive here in Pearland, Texas. Just here tonight representing myself, even though I am a member of the chamber as well as a board member. But the chamber itself has not weighed in on this particular issue like we have on the overall effect. So counsel, I'm here to not speak to this planning effort that's on the agenda. While I appreciate the effort of the EDC to spend four hundred thousand dollars on this effort, I do think the four hundred thousand dollars seems extremely high and bothers me that we only received one proposal. It would also have been nice if the EDC had sought the chamber's input on the scope of the proposed work on the front end. So to my knowledge, the chamber was not made aware of this effort until very recently. And that could be different, but that's, that's my knowledge. As a result, it has caused some confusion, confusion and misunderstanding as to the overall study and its intended outcome, but I am thankful that the EDC has proposed this effort, and as an individual, I do support it. I hope the city council is concerned with the potential devastating effects the widening of FM 518 will have on the existing businesses and property owners in the corridor. There are many questions about the proposed hundred and fifty feet right of way now being sought. I believe the hundred and fifty feet has been proposed for some time now, but until the schematic was shown here a couple of months ago, people didn't really understand the impact it has on their business and ultimately their livelihood. Now Tech Dot is marching forward with design to start by the end of the year. So understanding these issues in order to affect Tech Dot's design needs to happen now. If I were a business owner, and there are several in the audience tonight that are affected, I would want to know the financial impact that this is going to have both during and after construction. As an example, if Tech Dot takes half my parking, how will my business survive? Will I be properly compensated for that? The study should include financial impacts, but I didn't hear that in the, in the scope that was mentioned by Trent. If my front setbacks are now out of compliance and I have a devastating occurrence, fire, tornado, something like that, causing me to seek, to rebuild, how is the city going to react to these non-conforming uses? Keep in mind, I may have debt on the property or my business, and certainly the lien holder will want to be made whole. Remember, this is considered collateral. This study will help with some of that. So from your agenda that was in the staff memo, the policy and goal considerations about the, the strategic plan, and is it highlighted and talked about? This is one of the major corridors addressed in the strategic plan. It has the capacity to support additional businesses and the potential to move vibrant and visually appealing space that stimulates new and increases existing investment in the corridor. While new is always appealing, it's existing, and there's some existing businesses that are here that have been here year after year contributing to this community in many ways. If, and I'm only assuming you move forward tonight on this, I want to make sure that everyone at the city, from the mayor and the council to the staff and the consultants working on this are aware, there is already a vibrant business- working on this are aware, there is already a vibrant business community in the FM 518 corridor. I want to make sure their voices and concerns are heard. They have dollars at risk, customers to serve, employees to pay, and families depending on their businesses continuing to thrive. So with that, conclude my remarks. And as an individual, I, I am in favor of moving forward with this and actually adding to it for financial impact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Mayor.
Mayor, just to interject, just since it was brought up, I want to, the chamber president does attend PDC meetings and this was discussed at two meetings recommended by them. It's coming back to you because of the dollar amount as well. And there are multiple business owners that are chamber members and participants and also serve on the 2020 Steering Committee and we give those updates. So it's a good point and just wanted to reiterate that that, that, at least that base had been covered since that was brought up.
Well, it's going to be a long process that we're going through to make sure that we get a good roadway, but you know, there is a lot of undeveloped property along there and probably we need to put in place today a setback requirement from a center stripe of the roadway today to make sure that we don't perpetuate another build, build out of a facility in, that's in the right of way if it's, if it's, if that's the concern. That's something we maybe may take a look at. And which I realize is not I-45 Gulf Freeway because that thing is something born of a, a different breed. It's, it's developed into something, every year we, we expand the thing a little bit. I think we, if we're going to, we've got to address the issues. I don't know, there are some, probably some obstructions that would be, had to be removed, but I think we need to figure out how we could do that where it was, would be minimal impact as possible on any of the members, but let's make sure we don't increase it any by adding more into the potential right-of-way that we have today. So I think it's, one day if we, if we don't do something, we'll, each generation of leaders will say, why didn't we do something when they had the opportunity? Why didn't we do something today? And stop and it will have impact on individuals, it always does. And but I, I don't think that's something we should be happy about. That's not the process, but we're building a city, we're building roadways and mobility to make our citizens, who are concerned about the traffic right now, the, the roadway is only going to get worse as we go along.
I'm glad to see on reading this information about Austin moving the, the power lines to a different location. I mean, we go out and we have the power lines out there and then we plant trees in it. And when the trees get up big enough, they come in, gap them, it looks like crap setting up there. So I'm glad to see that that's part. And I guess that'd be our cost on that. We've got the city utilities that we pay for, 10% of the right-of-way. And anything I think on this one, it says that any enhancement beyond what text dot standards are, we pay for, whatever that is, on their, their standards aren't much. If you look at the other text dot roads or what they do for enhancement. So I would say that probably economic development, we will come back asking for a lot of money through there. So actually, Trent, I guess what we got is just from 288 down to Cullen so far. And then, then the next would be Phase Two from Cullen down to 35. And that's probably going to be the most expensive area down through there, I think.
Yeah, yes, sir. They, they are moving forward with the design on the entire corridor from 288 to 35. So it's everything, design, but construction that's funded at this point is 288 to Cullen.
Okay, so did we have any discussions with them on 35 down here to put an elevated section going across 35? I know that was talked about before, but we'd have to go down, what, a couple of hundred yards on either side, you know, to down there to be able to get it up high enough in the right grade in order to go across it, but.
Sure. So I think because of the, because of the proximity of the railroad tracks and State Highway 35, you would have to have an overpass that went over both the tracks and 35. And then to get to the 35, you would have to have surface roads.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a much, much, much wider corridor through there that would essentially take out all, everything through there. So that's always been kind of a, a non-starter because of the proximity to the railroad tracks with, with text dot as well as, as well as us, just because of the, the vast impacts there. We think, you know, look, looking at the potential for the, the one-way pair may be a better option, but it may not be, but we're going to look at those options as well.
Yeah. I appreciate the, the additional information on this. So we know text dot is involved now and on the committees to review that.
What, so I see that they've, they're proposing a five-foot wide sidewalk on either side of, of the roadway, but in some sections, the median is not quite as wide. And I'm sure that's because they're trying to save money on purchasing land from the owners for right-of-way. What's the feasibility of only doing a sidewalk on one side so that we gain space and maybe save some of these businesses that are along there? Because there's a lot of them that I know, if they, if anything gets taken from them, they're done, they're, they're gone. They're, they're not going to be able to, to make it. Specifically Clayton Funeral Home, they lose any space, they're done, they're gone. And that piece of property, you'll never be able to do anything with it. It's a triangle property and if they lose anything, I mean, there's not going to be any parking there for anything. I mean, I, I just, I don't know why we have to have a sidewalk on both sides.
I think from a walkability standpoint, we have a need for sidewalks on both sides. We see the gaps in the sidewalks today where, you know, people walk just off the, you know, there's, you can see the trails or the paths where they walk through or they walk in the street. There's options, one of the, the, one of the requirements from, for, for using the federal dollars that flow through text dot to do these types of roadways is they have, they're required to also have, they're required to have bicycle and pedestrian facilities. There's different ways of accomplishing that. What text dot's proposed is to basically have the right lane be a, a shared use lane between the vehicles and the bicycles. It's a much, it's a wider lane for that. What we've commented back to text dot is let's squeeze those lanes back down to the conventional lane sizes, but the shared use path that we've put on many of our thoroughfares, the 10-foot wide sidewalk or shared use path on one side. And then we can go with the, the five-foot minimum width sidewalk on the, on the other side and try to, try to squeeze down the amount of right-of-way necessary.
If I could, we're, we're all going to have, we need these concern areas so they can be highlighted, but that's a big part of why I do this. So you can identify where those are and then as Mr. Emerson said, you know, there's, there's generally going to be some options. So we need to understand those and be able to get those early rather than after text dot's locked into a, a set plan.
I think that's reason why we're going through this planning process, see what, what our issues are, how we can manage, have a good roadway from 35 or from actually Gulf Freeway all the way up to, all the way to 521, which is something we need to, need to put in place if we're going to grow as, as a city. So it's a study, I think, will highlight some of those issues and, and recommendations as how we can, you know, compensate into, that into the plan.
Is there a, is there a minimum width for the median with a, a six-lane roadway?
I think typically what is going to drive that is at the intersections where you have a crosswalk, there's a requirement for a, a minimum median width there of six feet to meet ADA. And so when you translate the six feet plus, usually it's about 14 to 15 feet wide turning lane, that's generally an 18-foot median. That doesn't mean that it can't be squeezed down in certain areas to, to minimize impacts. And those are some of the, the things we want to analyze as to where that can possibly be done. And, you know, the, the general purpose of this is to look at where there are impacts. How do we eliminate, minimize, or, you know, mitigate?
Okay, well, that, that, that would be a, a big concern of mine. My other concern would be what, what kind of, I guess, they're proposing to go with curb and gutter, which would allow us to do, allow us more space for roadway if we're able to be, have drainage underneath. But is there any areas that they're proposing not to do that?
So I believe as proposed, the entire corridor will have underground storm sewers. There are swells to what may possibly be small ditches shown on the cross-section. And a lot of that's going to be driven by the drainage criteria of the roadway. You know, there's, there's drainage requirements that text dot will, will meet to ensure that the road is passable when we have a, a large rain event, 100-year event. And a lot of that ti, a lot of the times that drives the, the roadway profile up above the adjacent properties, especially where there is no development. And so you've got adjacent properties draining towards the right-of-way and you've got to capture that runoff and put it in the underground system. And that's the purpose of the swells or the small swells or the, or the, or the ditches in some of those areas. Where the elevations work out or there's developments that have met, you know, the, the drainage criteria we have, a lot of the times they're going to be around the elevation or maybe above the elevation of the roadway and those, those can be eliminated. And those are another opportunity to, to squeeze the right-of-way down. And that's part of what we'll look at here. And, and it's, and it's going to vary because a lot of times your, your hydraulic grade line, which is where your water is when the system is full, is, is not just dependent on how big the pipes with the road you put in are, but it's going to be dependent upon your receiving stream as well. And if that receiving stream is driving that up, then the roadway elevation is going to have to drive up and we can't really fix that with, you know, bigger pipes or more pipes or anything like that. So it's, it's similar to what we've done on Magnolia and Bailey Road. When we've designed our major thoroughfares to be passable in a 100-year event, oftentimes we have to deal with the off-site runoff coming to the corridor and not being able to drain that directly into the system, having to capture it with swells and direct it into our system because we're higher than the adjacent properties and we can't just block that runoff back onto those properties and flood them.
If the contract's approved, when can we expect it to be completed?
We'd hope by the end of the year, so December.
And that gives you guys time to analyze the report before meeting with text dot.
And I would imagine we'd be meeting with text dot throughout the process.
I have a question about Task One or Kimley Horn, maybe one of the representatives from Kimley Horn wants to come up. Just got a quick question about your Task One, which is the meetings and workshops. I'm kind of concerned, just given my previous experiences dealing with government. How are we reaching out to the business owners and people affected by this? Is it just going to, I'm hoping that it's not just a letter going out to these people. I think it's a Phase One is a small enough group constituency that we can really reach out to them and try to increase engagement for all these meetings and, you know, workshop surveys, interviews, things like that. Can you just walk me through?
We'll obviously send a letter out, but we're going to work with the EDC and the chamber to actually contact these people individually, whether it's by email, whether it's by a phone call, whatever, get them on board, flyers left on there. Once we get people engaged, we have a couple of survey tools we do so businesses can give feedback through a survey on specific questions or more things in general. We're looking to have what we call stakeholder groups, have a couple of discussion groups where people can sit down, express their very specific concerns, like on a certain parcel, and then actually any other concerns they may have as well.
Okay, so you're going to work with EDC to try to find the appropriate, and I'm assuming chamber and all of the other people mentioned in these stakeholder committees to try to identify the.
And I did a 10-mile study on State Highway 146 in, through Baytown and Mont Belvieu last year, and we had great success getting from the big petrochem corporations down to some smaller, very small businesses to give, give feedback. And we got a lot of feedback. So we've had, I've had great success doing that. And that's quite honestly, the fun part of the study, is there's a little piece of knowledge that no one has except that business owner who sees something every day. So it's, it's great for the project.
Okay, that was my biggest question. I'll let you go. Thank you.
Council, have any other questions or comments at this point? I could, I'm on.
Well, if you want to come back up, during public comment, the gentleman had two questions. I guess one is the financial impacts to small business. What, what are y'all going to do? How, I mean, because sending them a survey is one thing, but saying, hey, what does this mean for you as you're losing this much land, you're going to be shut down with construction in front for X many days? And then second, and can you address the, the issues in regards to non-conformity and what you'd recommend in that regard?
Okay. A, as far as the financial analysis, we did not have a formal financial analysis in there, but we are going to look at impacts. I can go down, we're going to try and minimize impacts to businesses. And the gentleman who spoke public earlier, he did talk about, you take a strip mall-type narrow setback, you take that front row parking, you're taking the whole business. I've done this with text out a lot. So we will be able to have a, a very good idea on what the impacts are property-wise in terms of amount of right-of-way that'd be required. And we're also going to see how we can avoid that. The, the, the shut, the impacts of construction, we're going to have to rely on some data we have from the state on that. And then Tony, do you want to talk about the non-conforming properties? This is Tony Allender from Halls Hill, he's a sub to us on this, doing some of the more economic development stuff and the land use planning.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, as a matter of fact, as it relates to non-conformity, that's, it's one of my favorite parts because the question, you have your current code and then when you have the impacted businesses, how, how can you, as Mike said, how can you save as many of those businesses as possible? And there's a number of ways we can take a look at the codes and see if there are creative solutions that we can utilize for the codes. A lot of development codes, and I'm not saying Pearlands is like this, but most codes are built for greenfields, for new development. And when it comes time to start to look for redevelopment or maintaining your existing developments, then there's, you know, it's a different set of solutions. So being able to take a look at the existing code, being able to talk to those business owners, as Mike said, we'll be trying to get an understanding of what those impacts are and how we can mitigate those impacts through creative solutions. And some of those creative solutions are going to come to your development code. Does that help answer the question?
It does, but then also, you know, fast forward the tape, after this is all done 10 years from now and businesses operating in a non-conforming use because of parking, if they, if they look, I mean, to, to expand, that's one issue, but then also if there's any sort of natural disaster or something, I mean, there, there's so many issues that can crop up. I mean, how do, any ideas or suggestions or how, how are we going to handle that going?
Yeah, actually, that's, that's the perfect question because the idea is to minimize the number of non-conformities. So to the extent that you're able to look at the code and devise alternative solutions, creative solutions, say for example, parking. You know, if there is, you know, we can take a look at the parking that is required by code, we can take a look at the parking demand, excuse me, parking demand. And then we can look at alternative solutions so that those individuals are minimally impacted by parking. But at the same time, if it turns out that the codes might be slightly overparked, then there might be a solution whereby making some changes to the code, in fact, those individual businesses are no longer going to be non-conforming. So we're going to be looking at different ways to be able to look at your code and find creative solutions when you are impacted by reduction of the right-of-way. And the nice thing about this is this is something that we're applying to, to Broadway, but many of these solutions in the future, you might be able to take a look at in future widening projects and say, hey, maybe we can try that same, so.
What, what about, a, a lot of times a, a business could be grandfathered for UDC, but then when it changes hands by sale, they no longer have that grandfather clause.
Right.
I.e. 10 years from now, they decide to sell, now they have to, they have. I.e., 10 years from now, they decide to sell, now they have to, they have to follow the requirements.
Right, if there's a change in use, for example, where that grandfathering clause is impacted, yeah, there are going to be some businesses that are already grandfathered, right? And I think that's the difference between the non-conformity and the grandfather clauses. But again, you know, part of the idea behind this is to reduce as many of the non-conformities, and to the extent that the community is interested, we can address some of those grandfathering clauses as well, if we can come up with some creative solutions there, too. The idea is, as Mr. Cole said, you have some great existing small businesses here. Let's take a look at creative solutions that, to the best of our ability, will be able to allow them to not only continue to exist, but potentially expand.
We did encounter some of these types of situations on the 35 project, and so you had some non-conformities created by the project. And once that occurred, staff worked with those different property owners, businesses, and then they would come in, and in many cases, the staff actually processed and supported the request for a variance. Sometimes special exceptions may have been appropriate, depending on what the circumstance may be. One of the more common non-conformities was setback, parking, those types of things that are in, they were in compliance, then after the project, they were no longer in compliance. And so there were some alternatives provided through the UDC that we could do, and then sometimes maybe they're not be able to be addressed through the UDC. We'll have to look at some other options at that point. But it's something that we have encountered before, and staff has generally worked very well with the property owners in those instances.
So all the changes that were made on 35, if the property changes hands or changes use, I mean, will those variants still be allotted?
Once a variance is granted, for instance, for the parking, then that variance, then it goes on to the next property owner as well, passes with the land.
I just know that there are some older businesses here that are not for the UDC, and when those change hands, they're forced to come in compliance with UDC.
One of the reasons this is, the city supports those, is because, one, when somebody's requesting a variance, we have to be able to show, they have to be able to show that, one, it wasn't self-created. And so when a project is coming through and creating it, it's very easy to justify a variance. But, and the only caveat to what I said earlier is that it goes with the property. If that property changes its use after the fact, it may change the parking requirements, but that would be because of some, a change to, a choice to change that use, which would have impacted that. That's a separate choice after the fact.
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Councilmember, one of the ideas of going through this process is to allow us to identify those issues upfront, so we can look at one holistic approach to address them all proactively, instead of having to wait for each individual business owner or property owner to come forward later. So we'd like to, through this study, and then through whatever the final determination with Tech dot on the alignment is, we can see where we stand, how many properties are negatively effective, and then we can find a solution and address it at that time, before we get too far into the process.
There's a couple of things. I think the biggest concern I had before was the streetscape component to this. It's hard for me to imagine us getting a usable streetscape before the design is done. It's either right up, we're trying to minimize it. I don't know if that is a severable component to this, or if it's, we can minimize it. I just don't want to spend money on the aesthetic. Right now, we're looking at the needs, not the wants. The need is to try and survive, see what we can do to minimize the impact of this road so that the businesses that it can continue, we can identify to survive this, a taking that is damaging their business can survive. Now, I appreciate that those components are included. And I think it's a priority, and I certainly think it's worth the value, to help our citizens to try and come up with early identification of the impacts, let them start making some early decisions about how they want to manage those impacts. Let us try to hopefully input with Tech dot that we can, a way to minimize those impacts. I mean, I said in the last meeting, I mean, 146 is a great example. I'm sure that the community, EDC, I saw the EDC director from Seabrook a couple of times about their communication with Tech dot, and Tech dot still did what they want to do. And basically, there's no retail corridor along 146 that's going to survive that roadway widening. They've got a massive EDC effort to try and find how they relocate that. If that's the case, I'd rather have an early identification of that. But there's nothing to say that, hey, this is our design component, this is what we'd like you to do, that Tech dot wouldn't just take it and put it in the round file, and say, we're going to do what we want, because we prefer traffic as opposed to business, which is how they're going to look at it. So, I mean, I do think that we want to, we want to have the early communication. Again, I don't really care about the streetscape. With respect to the planning component, look, there's a simple tool that we have that we can, we can deal with, once we have this study that helps to widen the corridor in certain areas by at least 60 foot, which is to eliminate the landscape that's required in the corridor overlay. We just remove Broadway from corridor overlay and come up with a different zoning district for it. It gives us additional 30 feet to go in there, and nobody's, parking is impacted. That's great for over by Target. It ain't so great for over by Frost Bank and Emma's, and the areas where I work, where there's not, there's not that 30 feet, it wasn't enforced at that time. So I'd like to see where that can be utilized. I'm sure that that was on your list of things to review, and list of things to accommodate. So I think, you know, with the additional information, better clarification, I'm more in favor of it, to be honest with you. I'm trusting, I'm trusting trench explanation as to the necessity of this above most things, because I trust trench judgment on these things. So I want to move forward with it, because I want to give people like ANA Plumbing, and Exlator, and all the others that have corridors through, or are going to be affected by this, an opportunity to have an early identification of what their problems may be, and at least feel like they're having their voice heard. So I'm okay with moving forward with this. I just want to be careful about how we're utilizing the funds when it comes to beautification, or wants in the study, not needs.
Just one point on the streetscape. We're not proposing to do end-to-end streetscape plans. We're going to give you some typical sections and some ideas on how to do it. And that way, if you have an area with real tight right-of-way, maybe this is the streetscape. More, a different area would have a different one. We're not, we wouldn't propose end-to-end, just some typical sections for you on that.
As long as it's minimized, it's not a large component of the contract.
It is not.
I have just one small, last facetious question. Since windy roads supposedly control speed, how likely is it that they'll make this roadway as windy as possible to avoid having to purchase property?
You know, we're going to look at, not just, like, a lot of that schematic was just taking an equal amount on one's, either side. So we're going to look at where it makes sense to protect businesses, you know, shifting it a little bit here and there. You're not going to get the deflection in the curvature to really slow speeds. Now, you can do different things. There's a trend lately to use less than 12-foot lanes for certain roads. There's some striping trends you can do that actually psychologically will slow people down a little bit, and use some median treatment, so we can look at that for you if you like.
No, I'm just trying to use it to our advantage, because I've been told that before, why our roads are so windy and curvature. It looks like somebody drunk did them.
Well, some of that's just property allocation. You know, I think, you know, with respect to the road, the idea is to get the traffic through there as quickly as possible, not slow it down. But it does bring up a good point with the, with respect to the access management and the median openings. Are we going to try and input on median opening locations? Are we, is that included as part of?
I want to take a look at access management from end-to-end. You've got some opportunities to clean up some access management problems, while not penalizing the property owner's access, but there's better ways to do it in some of the corridors. I know I attended the Tech dot public hearing, and I heard a couple of business owners with some serious concerns. So we would go back and visit the median cuts, things like that, absolutely.
What about driveway consolidation?
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at that, where it makes sense. Removal consolidation, or just relocation a little bit for safety reasons and efficiency reasons along there. But we're going to try not to propose anything that really penalizes a property owner.
Fair enough, and we'll let you, under this contract, go to the property owner and let them know when we're removing a driveway, so they can yell at you.
I've been yelled at once or twice before, so.
I think it's, I mean, the driveway consolidation, particularly in the older sections, is probably something we need to look at, where we have the ability. But I know the median openings are going to be of consternation, no matter what happens. We need the medians, you have to have the medians in the middle of the road, the road's not safe. But, yeah, having some input early on, so that the businesses have an opportunity, and we have an opportunity to say what's a priority and what's not. Hopefully, that'll work.
In 518, it was extended from Cullen all the way out to 288. It was not a wide roadway. It was designed to fit the population at that time, which is about 27,000 people. And it was widened once already, and to accommodate the growing population at that, several years ago, I don't remember him enough, but. This, this is a phenomenon that takes place, it's been doing in Houston, it's all over the country. We don't build the roads big enough, because we don't sometime anticipate where the population's going to wind up and need that wider road in the future, which is a lot easier to pay for and a lot easier to do. But I think this study that we're doing will be an opportunity for us to learn some things that maybe will have to be applied to other roadways. There's a limited amount of population that a city can hold, and when we get to that population base, it may be a couple of hundred thousand, whatever, but I think that we need to look at lessons learned, what we, lessons to be learned, and figure out how we can, this study we're going through, how we can use it, not only for widening this road, for, is it adequate for the population we're going to use in the future? I don't know. Maybe you could determine whether, oops, this is really not going to be big enough after all. And maybe we could use those findings, and you guys have been in this for a long time to do this.
We can provide you with a list of best practices, as you look at other corridors throughout the city.
Yeah, and we need to look at some of the roads in town right now that probably anticipate, is that, is that the route for future traffic? Maybe we need to look at that and put some requirements on it, setback time, setback. If you're developing, you've got to be this far back from the center, sorry, the things of that type. So there's a lot to be learned from this one. There's a lot to be, it would be beneficial to go ahead and make it happen. And, but it's not the only road that'll be widened in the future.
One last question, and I'll be ready to vote on it, about everybody else. But how often will we get updates from y'all on where you're at? What's, what you've kind of secured, so that we kind of know where y'all are? I mean, I don't want to wait till the last minute and find out, okay, here's our package, y'all got to vote on it, and we got to get it in.
Well, since, I would say we're going to provide the EDC with an update. We're going to be meeting with them regularly, but at least once a month, we can provide a short summary update that would be suitable for y'all. And if you have a question on any particular item in the update, you can always ask the EDC to have us elaborate on that a little bit further.
Okay, that was my real question, was how do we get questions to y'all?
We'll invite you to some of the stakeholder meetings and send you the survey, too, so, I mean.
Perfect, thank you.
The more participation, the better.
I've got a question, maybe this would be more for Matt, but as we go through this, would there be potential to identify maybe some of the, I know this doesn't go beyond 35, but kind of thinking ahead, there may be potential for some of the smaller streets that connect to maybe turn into promenades and walkable areas, things like that? Is this something that could come off of this? Because I saw there was an urban design component to this as well, just trying to think ahead.
There are three areas that we're looking at to do a little bit more study. I mean, I wouldn't say we're going to be evaluating all the streets, but we do have three areas, one in Old Town, one like the Avalon Terrace area, and then the west of Cullen that we'll be looking at more detail in, and that's the concept plans area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Staff having more contribution to making this thing happen, or?
Thanks for all the input, and like, I think the point about regular updates will behoove all of us, and looking forward to getting after this. And I think we'll benefit by getting these ores in early with Tech dot for the work.
Just councilor, have any further comment to wrap up?
Maybe provide us a schedule of when you think there'd be good milestones for us to get an update on what this report is revealing, so we can have some.
Do a monthly on the 15th.
Okay, like through Thursday packet?
Yeah, we'll get them on the 15th, and we'll push them out the next packet after that.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor. See what happens.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, with that information on the record, let's move then into new business item five, Councilmember Owens.
Consideration possible action resolution number R 2019-119. Hey, I saw it move.
Did I get a motion second on that? Okay.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Motion didn't hear the second. Motion, motion on council?
Thanks, sir. As the packet outlines, city obviously secures wind insurance, and each year, this time of year, I believe required, we need to do this by the end of the month, for sure. And there's an interesting table that shows the limits of the coverage. We've been able to increase steadily as the city's inventory of assets has climbed. Last year is over $200 million, and the premium paid actually fluctuates. At the lower end, it's been high as $690,000, based on experience, et cetera. But with AMRIS, we've got a quote, and it's going to be about 4% more for next year, $21,000 more. So recommending securing this coverage, so we're protected on our buildings and so forth. That's all I have, sir.
Can I complete your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, councilor, have any question or comment? You know, looking at the type of weather we've had recently, and it's something completely different. Makes me think on the way home driving, that maybe Al Gore had something after all. But we do, we've had the rain, we've had the, all of these type of options. And I'd sure hate to have windstorm and driven rain insurance problems that I came here to do, which was probably with heavy wind and behind it. So just a comment, and councilor's going to contribute their viewpoint at this point. I don't feel the council has any questions on it. Carbone, do you want to have a couple?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Can you elaborate on, I guess, the timing of the RFQ? And I guess how that happened, and what, February? But there was a record, a broker of record in December?
Looking back on that, we could and should have, probably, not should have, we will, next time, get the broker that assists us locked in early in the process, and then go along with them. That contract was executed as about $48,000. They, there had been a process going through to do a solicitation with an RFP and get proposals. The employee that was running that looked around and, you know, for some reason, actually switched and went off of a cooperative bidding process. Would have gotten us the same firm, but, you know, it took us a little while to unwind why we were going down that road and then switched, but wouldn't have changed who we would have selected. And like I said, next time, we're going to get the broker earlier and lock that in, and then bring you, as we have here, the actual policy for the coverage, you know, as a separate contract. Thank you.
Councilor, any further questions or comments? Don't believe staff has. Madam Secretaries, looks like we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item nine, mayor council issues for council discussion. There were none presented to us at this meeting. Executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Attorney Counsel, Client Privilege, Consultation of City Attorney on Confidential Matters Relating to Attorney Counsel Privilege. And also for Section 551.072, for Consultation of City Attorney Regarding the Sale, Lease, Purchase, or Exchange of Real Property. This time, we will recess into executive session at 9:07. Counsel has returned from executive session at 10:30. Moving to number one, under executive session, Section 551.071.
Yes, mayor, I'd recommend two motions, I actually will only need one vote, but I'm going to recommend two components to this motion. One is the acquisition of property for the McCord Road right-of-way and regional detention as discussed in executive session, as well as the acquisition of four acres from PISD for public purposes as discussed in executive session.
So moved. We had a motion and a second.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
I said aye. Nah, I said yes.
Okay, moving to new business item two, Section 551.072, Consultation of Sales, Lease, Purchase, and Exchange of Real Property. Have permission by council to move that on? Is there a motion for that?
Actually, mayor, to clarify, there was only one new business item, and that was the action with respect to the sale, lease, or exchange of real property, and the motion that the council just took was related to the exchange, sell, or release of real property.
Moving to new business continued, item six. This is condition of possible action, or sale, lease, purchase, or exchange of real property.
Mayor, no, that's what I was just trying to clarify, that when we came out, the recommended motion was for item number six on the agenda, and so the action that was just taken and approved was item number six.
I just want the record to know that. And moving to other business, none. And, I got these separated here. Item 10 says adjourned. That's what it said. Do we want to go home now?
Yes, yes.
Other business, none. Item 10 is adjourned.